Meetings called to order. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Walls of 1975, entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Federal Hall. Runnymede House Office, Monty Library, Marygold School, Line Bayland School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please rise if you would like to release this mic again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, equal to this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, board members?
Mrs. Dare, Mrs. Bebe, Mr. Buckton, Mrs. Davidson, Mrs. Barry, Mrs. Penzarella, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Torrell, Mrs. Baldwin.
Here. Also present, Mark Ayutu Superintendent, Sean Carr, Business Administrator, Board Secretary, Earl Vasalla, Business Consultant, Jay Yessi, Principal of Bingo and Throwing School, Steve Peely, Principal of Marygold School, James Winkelsbeck, Vice Principal of Marygold School, and Lori Heinz, Child Study Team Supervisor. Before we move into executive session, we have a few guests this evening.
We have two executive board members. All ladies stand up. Amanda Jango and Victoria Rivera. You're going to share a little about -- These guys are very confident and they're freelancing, though. I'll give them a read-off. They're going to share a little about student life and what's going on here.
So, we just had our job show this year, and it's the first one since fifth grade. And we had like 23 acts for six companies, and we raised $500 for the Ronald McDonald House in Camden.
And we have an upcoming school band, Superhero Bees.
That's cool.
Yes, the fifth grade is trying hard to come and make their transition, like the middle of summer.
And on May 23rd is the Band Choir Competition, and the bigger six choir bands are, and it's following.
Victoria was our representative of Camden County, April 11th.
Yes, she did a wonderful job.
Are you big on eight graders?
Yes.
Oh, good.
And we're currently taking New Jersey, and today is my birthday.
How was it? Good? Hard? Was it math or language arts?
Language arts.
Language arts.
And next week is fourth grade. And we were thinking that, we were thinking that we should be able to choose gum or have mint during the New Jersey. Not this year, but like this celestial is in New Jersey, so I think it could help us. And that's when my sister was in third grade, so, like, a while ago. They were actually left with gum and mint, and the teacher distributed some. And like, after that year, they just stopped it, and my sister actually did better in third grade when they were around, and not what I would have wanted. So, I think, like, not specifically this year, but like in general, like, over five grades, and we were gum and mint, and we just...
We like your research.
And how do we all feel about this? We're just going to say this to you, that we will work with student council a little bit, and student government officers about ways to present ideas, and we're discussing how to come to a board meeting and talk about things that we would like to do and move ahead with for the student body. So, comes out of that discussion and the words, and opinions like that.
I'm pretty sure there's some research that you ladies can find that will prove that gum and mints are beneficial, so Google that this evening, and you can bring it in.
Look at me silly. I'm really excited about that. Ten minutes. We'll discuss the next one.
One more thing.
We were discussing it with our home room teacher, and she said it gives us non-parenthesis. We need to go, it's not all being due, it's your, A, it's bright, and B, it's bright and...
Right.
So, but how do you think it helps? Do you think it's the sugar last, or?
No, it's like more of like nightly.
Relaxing.
Yeah, relax, every kind of stressful, because like eighth, well, seventh grade is an important year for New Jerseyans, because like all the high schools look good. So, it's really stressful for the students, but definitely has been a teacher's special line, so they're out of the call, but you're waiting for us to add three.
And if the principal doesn't like the idea of sugar, maybe he would like, or accept, like, setting candles.
Fire codes.
It burns, it's on my hand.
Right. We'll be taken under advisement.
We will definitely take that into consideration, so it's, even though it may not be this year, next year, we'll give you credit.
Thank you.
Yeah. That is...
By the way, did you guys get a chance to go to the Rockford South now? Did they go to Rockford South now?
Victoria, why?
Great place, right? Wonderful layout. Alright, at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Let's make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made by Naomi. Let me get a second.
Okay.
Seconded by Angel. All favor.
I.
Whereas while Senator Byron M. Bayer, Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12, requires all meetings of the Runnymede School District Board of Education to be held in public, NJSA 10:4-12 being set forth nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in the second session without the public being permitted to attend. And whereas the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education has needed and necessary to go into closed session due to discuss certain items which are accepted from the public. And whereas the nine exemptions in public meetings set forth in NJSA 10:4-12, they are listed below, and next to each exception is a box within which a number of issues to be privately discussed that fall within that exception shall be written, and after each exception is the space where additional information that will disclose as much information of that decision as possible without undermining the purpose of the exemption shall be written. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will go into closed session for the following reasons, as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12B. Any manner the disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, such as any records, data, reports, recommendations, or other personal material, any educational training, social service, medical help, custodial, child protection, rehabilitation, legal defense, welfare, housing, relocation, insurance, and similar program or institution operated by a public body pertaining to any specific individual admitted to or served by such institution or program, including but not limited to. Information relative to the individual's personal and family circumstances and any material pertaining to admission, discharge, treatment, progression, or condition of any individual unless the individual is concerned or in the case of a minor or incompetent in his guarding, shall request and write in the same way disclosed publicly, and in that case, we are going in for discussion of student matters. Another reason we are going in is any collective bargaining agreement or terms and conditions of which are proposed for inclusion in any collective bargaining agreement, including negotiation of terms in addition with employees or representatives of the employees of the public body, more specifically, discussion of memorandum of agreement with the Runnymede Education Association. And finally, any matter involving the appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions on employment, evaluation of the performance, promotion, and discipline of any specific respective public officer or employee, or current public officer or employee employed or appointed by the public body, unless all individual employees or appointees whose rights could be adversely affected request in writing, as such matter or matters we discuss at a public meeting, more specifically, discussion of renewal and non-renewal of staff and our superintendent evaluation. Whereas the length of the executive session is not determined, however, the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will make every attempt to estimate the time of session prior to convening the session after which the public meeting shall begin. That's going to be 7:45 PM, about a half hour we estimate, and the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will proceed with business. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education will go into executive session for only the above stated reasons. Be it further resolved that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education hereby declares that this discussion of the aforementioned subjects may be made public in a time when the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education Attorney advises that disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest, or duty of the school district, or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education for the aforementioned reasons hereby declares that the public is excluded from the portion of the meeting during which the public discussion shall take place, and hereby directs the Board Secretary to take appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the Board Secretary, the next business day following this meeting, shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any member of the public who requests one of these laid out by NJSA 47:1A-1. Action on any item, mayor, may not be taken in open session, conclusion of the executive session. At this time, we're going to go into executive session in the library, so the public does not have to... We already have, we roll call. We already have I, 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 before I ready. At this time, we are going to need a motion to return to public session.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. All favor to return to public session. I have it. We're returning to public session at 8:00 PM on the dot. Alright, at this time, I need approval of, hold on, let me just get my, okay. I need approval for minutes. March 17, budget hearing, March 24th work session, March 24th regular meeting, and March 24th executive session.
Motion made by Chad.
I'll second.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Bebe?
Yes, to number one. I abstained from all March 24th.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
I abstained from all three. I was not present.
Mrs. Barry?
I abstained.
Mrs. Penzarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell?
I abstained from number one, and asked for G34.
Mrs. Baldwin?
Yes.
Do we have enough, or do we have the...
I have four yeses and a number one.
So, we know, we'll have to wait until we have four board members?
Four, four. I have Bebe, uh, Penzarella, and Baldwin.
So, we'll have to put them on the agenda for next month, when we have more board members who are present?
Yes.
Of who's here this evening?
Right.
Gotcha. So, we're good. Are you good, Sean? Alright. I need a motion to approve the financial report.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Naomi. Seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Bebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Mrs. Barry?
Yes.
Mrs. Penzarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, it says that we don't have any presentations, and Naomi tried to surprise us with something, but Dr. McCarron and, and Mr. Ayutu had already knew, and so we just wanted to, we'll celebrate later, but we just wanted to publicly congratulate you. It says the Runnymede Public School District Certificate of Recognition awarded to Naomi Davidson in recognition of earning sufficient credits under the New Jersey School Boards Association Board Member Academy Program to receive a Master Board Member Award. She has satisfied all criteria, including earning a minimum of 40 credits through attendance at academy programs, the NJSA annual workshop, and a variety of county programs. We applaud her for caring enough about the Runnymede School District to make the effort on her own time to improve her skills and knowledge in this most important position. So, congratulations. Thank you. And y'all, and I, we all hope that can make you have a great dinner on May 6th, where you'll also be recognized. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So, at this time, we're going to move to no present, other presentations correspond with, public comments on agenda items only. At this time, are there any public comments on agenda items? Alright, moving along to the Board Secretary's report. Anybody have anything that you want to touch on?
I've been working with Earl's Business Consulting, transitioning the business office to make sure that everything is running smoothly. Checks and balances are in place, in meeting with CUSAC about a week ago. Not only did we present them with the areas of curriculum that were identified as the improvement, but also the areas that have been identified in other areas of its guidance to show that we had made strides in all of those places. As of right now, everything is going smoothly. No complaints.
Alright, any questions for Dr. McCarron? If none, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Feedback on some of Sean's statements in a minute. Just took enrollment, as you can see, we fill our 10 office replacements. Senator Mead, you know, part of the administrative meeting this past month or so, we did meet with the DACT committee back in college, shows the way we cannot, we have another meeting scheduled for May 21st, which is to discuss again, goal objectives, as well as platform switch will be in next year, including TCA in a week or two, no time. I want to thank the administration, both the teacher representatives for that meeting as well as Mrs. Penzarella to take time out of her day, including the, the 21st. We did meet to discuss last night, as you said earlier, to talk about policies. I want to thank all the ladies in the business office for helping us out. We're doing these policies over the last several months, and as we talked about earlier, we will have some policy provisions to be done coming up for the next couple of weeks, so, looking out for that. As far as the, picking back off the, the act, our supplement evaluations, which every stamp number, every certificate stamp number has to do, will be done. We have a technical set for May 15th to have that finished. We pre, we pre-set the four, the two, the best, and the four teacher appointment, and that will be sent out in the next, next couple of days. Dr. McCarron to the CUSAC, former superintendent of the Board, and well, the way, some of the things we're doing tonight, a little persecution of our points back, that one, which is a very good time of review group. Appreciate Sean's input for that. Any questions for that? A lot of the areas where we've also, we encourage them a lot, and things like that, so, just try to, as well, so, all those things were correct, the actual plan was presented, artifacts and evidence were able to be pulled together from the calendar, they were happy with what we were doing, before they gave us some suggestions in areas of articulation, way across the curriculum, as well as our oral language program, which they recommended we do some more rigorous activities with the schools, from January 3, trying to do this a couple of years, but I asked them if there was anybody that was doing it, whether they sold, and they couldn't give us anybody, so, we're going to possibly, yeah, we're going to try to create like a little consortium or some addition to see what they're doing, try to tie it up, so we can beat up our whole language program. And finally, we also have a Black Horse Pike regional last week, Earl, Sean, and myself discussing cheer services with some other things to try to make some articulation amongst ourselves and Black Horse Pike moving forward. And then back to our pay, finishing up my residency action plan, which was required, get my standard certificate, my superintendents, as well as all the different events that I don't, I'll probably make many dependent on the basketball, so I might take TCA for all of my work, I don't know what the total was dollar-wise, but I ended up doing a nice job. As some other things we've tended, nice job with these qualities that earlier in the talent show, as well as the art show, I tend to, as you know, it's a big hit, it's split time this year to alleviate the congestion, which is also successful, but I think it's called after that. Any questions?
Any questions for Miss Ayutu? Thank you. The principals' report, supervisor of curriculum instruction, nurses' report, special education report, and buildings and ground report were attached. Do we have any other additional comments or questions? I know we asked them during our work session. Are there any further? No? Okay, TCA report?
Thank you. Our big event, like you said, you had mentioned, was our basket auction, that was a huge success on Friday night. On behalf of TCA, we'd like to thank the people here who were instrumental in donations, administration, the board yourself donated a fantastic basket that was full of chances, the members of business office, the teachers, the parents, many of the classes themselves, kind of donations. As a result, tentative members show a possible profit of up to $19,000. So, it was a huge success, we're looking forward to helping. And that was only possible through hard work of many of the officers, past officers, who just continue to help, and support of fantastic executive work that I'm very proud to work with. So, this was a great event, we're looking forward to saying that on all the children and the school districts. So, first thing first is our school trips that are coming up. We're working with the principals and things to coordinate, to help assist those. And our next event is the Little Guy and Miss Gal event. We had to move the date so that it did not conflict with a, another school event, so, we did move it to May 16th, so that's on, we're kind of, and then, right now, and then, as personally, I'm also helping with the eighth grade end, so, things are moving really quickly. The little boy told me, said, there's 35 days left, so, we're laughing. I know, it's a short knock. Thank you, and congratulations.
Committee reports, is there any update for Camden County and Services?
Not this time.
Okay, New Jersey School Boards?
Our delegate meeting is May 17th, so I'll be attending, and then I'll report back to the board.
Great. Anything for Black Horse Pike? We can get in our webinars, thank you. That was the board, I didn't get a chance to tell you that the board, that was a good idea, we're going to include the monthly newsletters that go out, so you can see everything that's happening in all of the buildings that Black Horse Pike reaches the school district. About negotiations?
Angel, could you speak on that? Angel, could you speak on that? We have reached an, an agreement at this time, which is waiting for, when you're back to you.
Alright, new business, under property transportation. I need a motion to approve items number one through nine.
I make a motion to approve items number nine.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi. Roll call.
Mrs. Bebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Barry?
Yes.
Mrs. Penzarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Baldwin?
Yes.
I apologize. Under... Sorry, I was, I was trying to hold a conversation, I apologize. Other personnel, I need a motion to approve items number one to 15, with the addendums number six as a substitute, number 14 for the Title I curriculum writing, and superintendent evaluation that we discussed in executive.
I definitely need that.
Hold on a second. Motion made by Maria?
Yes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Baldwin. Roll call.
Mrs. Bebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Barry?
Yes.
Mrs. Penzarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, I would like to publicly wish, give some well wishes to two longtime employees of the Runnymede School District, so, Lynn Hamburgh and Beth Jordan, if the principals could let us know that we wish them well, and thank them for all their years of service, many, many years of service. Okay, and...
I want to congratulate Dr. McCarron, just like...
Where's that?
Well, he's number like five.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're going to have, we're going to have a little, have a little party for Dr. McCarron, because, because people were sad that we hid it, and now we can celebrate Naomi, we can feel the support of one state, alright. Two days.
Just kill us.
Five minutes, I need a motion to approve items number one through 10. Again, we added the professional development.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chad.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Roll call.
Mrs. Bebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Barry?
Yes.
Mrs. Penzarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Baldwin?
Yes.
Under curriculum, there is no any additional addendum, so I need a motion to approve items number one through five.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number one through five.
Motion made by Naomi?
I'll second.
Seconded by Maria. Roll call.
Mrs. Bebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Barry?
Yes.
Mrs. Penzarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so, we're going to now, there's nothing, this, this, policy, policies. At this time, there, we're going to have a public comment on any item, does not have to be an agenda item. Any public comments at this time? Mrs. Callen.
Back in, Mrs. Baldwin. I have with me letters that going to the children who wrote essays for mayor and council. There's 16 children this year, and I want to thank Mr. McCarron on behalf of our committee, because we initially only had five, and that's very disappointing, it wouldn't even be tomorrow, so we were disappointed. And Ms. Passio brought that to Mr. McCarron's attention, and we've got eleven more, so, I don't know if I should give them to Mr. Ayutu to give to the children, but they have to give to the children tomorrow.
Mr. Peely?
Thank you, Mr. Peely.
Mr. Peely.
He's also instrumental in those official students.
Thank you so much. In there is the itinerary, all the instructions they need about where they have to be each day during that week, and what their obligations are. So, it's a wonderful program, and we're just about the only borough in this area that's even doing this anymore. They discontinued this throughout this area. So, I want to thank you again, Mrs. McCarron, Mr. Peely, and Mr. Ayutu for your help on that. The other issue I'm going to talk about was the Chromebooks. Now, I wasn't at the last meeting when I had Passio this year, but she did say that you purchased 80 of them?
Eighteen additional.
Eighteen Chromebooks for a price of $31,000?
Over.
In that, in that area. How are they going to be used, and what's, what's the story on that? Because nobody on council knew what Pat, Passio was talking about.
Sure. Chromebooks, we're trying to increase technology within our schools, that's the direction that education is going. By doing this, what we're doing is we're trying to empower teachers and students within the building to engage all of our learners. That being said, what we're looking to do is we're trying to have a one-to-one initiative that will build over the course of years, where students will be using the Chromebook devices within their classrooms and being using technology. Currently, when you look at curriculum, you're going to find that the second that you buy a textbook, it's automatically updated. With using technology as a means, what's going to happen is, we're going to constantly be getting those updates. Does that eliminate books altogether? Absolutely not, because they are absolutely still resources. However, what it does is it empowers our students to learn different methods, so that way, we're really trying to engage all of our students.
So, we have eighty-one, and who, eighty, how many will get them? So can I, one, and who, I think, how many will get them?
Well, forty Chromebooks were purchased initially, and they were given to staff. The reason why is we want to make sure staff are able to find what's going to work best in their classrooms with their students. We then purchased an additional eighty this year out of the current budget, because money was already.
So actually, we have a hundred and one?
Yes. So what we're going to be doing with those Chromebooks is actually distributing them between fifth, sixth, and seventh grade classes, so that way we can use them in a small group, in a small group setting with students. So about five in each classroom is what we're looking to do, so teachers can begin incorporating this into their lessons. Hopefully, we'll be dealing fifth and sixth grade, possibly seventh, if it permits us to do so, between this budget and next year's budget. And as time goes on, those seventh grade students will move to eighth, and then we'll be replenishing down in fifth grade again and building that program over time.
So the children do not keep the Chromebooks? They stay here in the school?
They are school property. Currently, they are staying here in school. As of next year, once everything is set up, because it's a huge logistical thing that needs to be put in place, to make sure everyone knows what the expectation is when they're given one of the devices, students will be permitted to take the Chromebooks home and use them as part of their learning.
And what security is in place so that you don't lose them? For better?
Parents, all parents will be expected to sign off. Many school districts who are doing a one-to-one initiative will actually charge parents an insurance fee that they don't get back. At this point in time, we're having parents and students sign off before we give a device. If there's an individual situation where a parent does not feel comfortable with their student having one, we will deal with those on a case-by-case basis, and of course, find other means for students in classroom setting.
Well, that answers all my questions. Second, just for her. The other, the other issue that I wanted to talk about, myself and two other members on council, received the school performance report, which is online, and to say the least, we were very disappointed in the fact that our performance is significantly lower, and this is twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, the twenty fourteen is now, than our schools in our peer group. Now, in looking at the overall picture, I noticed that approximately forty-six to forty-eight percent of our children are termed economically disadvantaged. So what I'm looking at is, if you have three hundred children in Downing School, approximately a hundred and fifty are economically disadvantaged, is that the reason for our poor performance?
That can be considered a factor, but I don't think it's, and that gets an insult to somebody who's economically disadvantaged. Automatically, it's certainly considered a harsh condition.
Well, I live on.
Possibly a factor, but I, I, I don't accept that as educators being it, the reason why.
Okay, we'll get back to that. But I did go on Otobahn, they're, they're, they're middle school, the three to sixth grade, and they have twenty-two percent that are economically disadvantaged, and they are significantly performing better than the schools in their peer group. So that was my question, is that the reason? Is there something that we as the governing body, that I can take back to my people and say, this is how we can help? Because a lot of money comes to you people. A lot of money is spent on our children, and it's well invested, because if we don't have investment in our future, we don't have a future. So this is only well spent, as far as I'm concerned, but we want to get the bank for a buck, and I'm going to see it happening, if, if the performance, I mean, look at, look at just our absenteeism. We're not even meeting the target of six percent, we're at eight percent. Otobahn is five percent. I'm just, I just want to know what's going on. Where can we help? What can we do?
Ms. Calley, first, I want to say that the performance groups that you're looking at are from the census in two thousand. The Department of Education did not review the census in two thousand and when it was conducted, so it doesn't necessarily give you a good perspective of category B to category B. That would be my first there. Secondly, as you said, it's a twelve thirteen overview that you're looking at.
Yeah.
Since twelve thirteen, a lot has changed. I think it's fantastic that you're coming to board news, because I do think that communication needs to increase between community and school. And the Goodemount Mayor Council is a fantastic program, and Mr. Peely and I actually spoke with students regarding it. And one, one of the only issues that we had was getting students to give up the weekends, because they're involved in so many activities. So it was the help of Mr. Peely, Mr. Winklevoss, and Mr. Calipara that actually got us to do that, and I spoke to Ms. Passio?
Yes.
Correct? Councilwoman Passio. And I told her that maybe something we might want to look at is looking at a different time of school year, when we can do it, because we don't want to lose that program because it is so beneficial to students. However, this time of year is extremely difficult for many of our students to participate. Our music program holds rehearsal at six forty-five, seven A.M. every morning, because if she didn't, she wouldn't have a turnout of students in the afternoon, because they are involved in so many other activities. In terms of looking at the current curriculum and where we are, we have made huge strides this year, and I think that's reflected in our last CUSAC visit. The CUSAC is the county superintendent comes out with her committee, evaluates where we are and everything. Looking at your performance report, Runyon was twenty-seven? Twenty-seven to thirty percent under curriculum. That has changed drastically from the time that Mr. Ayunuchi and myself just met. As you know, there's a whole new administration within Runyon. Not to say that the previous administration wasn't doing something incorrectly, however, right now, we have our focuses in terms of what we're looking at and what we're doing.
Well, is there, there's something personally that I could tell my people on council that you're, that we're going to be getting something better next year?
I think you can absolutely tell them, people, the changes have been made, and that things are moving in the correct direction.
I'll be encouraged, I'll be encouraged.
You should be encouraged, because those wonderful things happen in this whole district every single day.
And also, I spoke to a number of parents who just wanted to come in and speak to me about the curriculum. I have no problem meeting with any council member, I would almost encourage it, for them to come in and have to personally discuss curriculum and where we're going.
Anytime, be a bit of the door policy, they're all welcome, anytime.
Well, I thank you for your time and your responses. It certainly gives me encouragement to look for some changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? No? Okay, the next regular board meeting is going to start at five-thirty on May twenty-first. Again, we're going back to Wednesdays. We're going to start at five-thirty to have a special meeting in regards to policies, and then our board meeting will begin at seven-thirty, if you want to give the board enough time. So that's the twenty-first, five-thirty policy, seven-thirty regular meeting.
That's a revisit to the agendas you have in front of you.
Yes, that's different, that's different, we revised that. Any other questions, your concerned board members? No? All right, I need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Maria?
Second.
Seconded by Naomi, all in favor?
Aye.
The adjourn, the twenty-sixth.